Good evening, everyone. We will get underway here. It is Monday, July 9, 2018 at 5:00 PM. This is a meeting of the Oregon Village Board. I'd like to call a meeting to order, please. And then, item two. We have a village board statement tonight in recognition of Darlene Grunier's service to the village, board, and the community. It is with great sadness that we learned of Darlene's passing on June 22nd following a courageous battle of cancer. The village board requests everyone to keep Darlene and her family your thoughts and prayers. Darlene will be greatly missed by everyone. She was a dedicated public servant who served 11 years as a village board member and always worked to improve our village, never asking for anything in return. Even through her sickness and treatment, Darlene continued to attend village board meetings to serve village residents. A memorial service will be held on July 19th. Out of respect for Darlene's family and her memory, the board will discuss filling her board seat at a future meeting. I would now ask for a moment of silence for Darlene. Thank you. And I would mention that the flowers at her place are in memory and recognition of Darlene and out of respect to her family. Our condolences to her husband, Jim, and their four sons. Item three is roll call.
Boudreaux.
Here.
Ballig.
Here.
Staten.
Here.
Peterson.
Here.
Jacobson.
Here.
Carpenter.
Here.
Thank you. Item four, I would like to welcome our new library director, Jennifer Way, to the village. Jennifer is sitting right over here. Started at the start of the month, and we're pleased to have her on board and look forward to working with her. And she'll jump again tomorrow. There's a meeting of the memorandum of understanding group, and we'll start bringing that to close and bringing Jennifer up to date. So we're looking forward to her presence on the village. She has experience working with municipal board and experience working with moving to a new library at Stockbury. So we're pleased to have that kind of experience here. So, welcome, Jennifer. You're welcome.
Excuse me, ma'am, Steve. I said I didn't want to talk.
Can you sit? Okay. Thanks, Jim. You take care. We're thinking about you, guy. Okay, item five is public appearance. Item A, discussion with Ann Delman and possible board action designated in October, dementia-friendly month in Oregon. This will be in conjunction with beginning a memory cafe in October as well. So if you come to my component, please, Ann, and welcome. So I frequently comment that people that come before the board are former students. Ann is not. She's a former colleague working with me. I said that for the benefit of Jeff Raul. Well, it just gives me a bad time. Go ahead, Ann.
Well, basically, what we're looking to do is have Oregon be declared dementia-friendly month in Oregon, or I'm sorry, October be declared dementia-friendly month in Oregon. And we're hoping that this helps just keep the whole dementia-friendly movement alive and kicking. And we will, what we would hope to do is get pamphlets out or flyers out to businesses that maybe have not had the dementia-friendly training, or to businesses that have but maybe have new employees, for instance, the library. And we would use October as the month to get out there and get everyone retrained or made aware again. And again, like you said, it is in conjunction with Memory Cafe that we're putting together, and our goal is to have that open on Thursday, October 11th, I believe, and then would run every second Thursday of every month throughout the year. I don't know if any of you have any experience with memory cafes, but they're a wonderful thing. And we've already gotten quite a bit of feedback from the community as well as the senior center, and there's quite a lot of interest in it. So, and that would be, the gentleman who manages or owns HQ is going to let us use that separate room that they have every month for the memory cafe. So that was really nice. And, any questions?
Yeah, for those people watching, can you explain a bit what a memory cafe is?
Okay. A memory cafe is a cafe where people who are dealing with dementia or Alzheimer's and their caregivers or family are welcome to come for the morning, and usually there will be an activity going on, coffee, couple of little snacks, just a safe place to come and be with people and communicate. And I did go to the Stoughton Memory Cafe to see what it was like, and it was really wonderful. They probably had about 12 people there between those dealing with Alzheimer's or dementia as well as their caregivers or family members. And it's just a nice, safe, fun environment for them to spend some time.
Okay, great. Are there other questions for Ann? Jeff?
Can you help me remember, anybody here? Can you help me remember if October is also Breast Cancer Awareness Month? So, when it comes to designating months for illnesses throughout the year, I don't, this is my first time ever being asked to do that. How do we manage that as a board? Does it matter if it conflicts with another illness that's being recognized that month? Is it ceremonial? I mean, how does that work?
It's the recognition and bringing more publicity to the event, so it's not a problem of two in the one month.
And do you have any concerns at all about folks, you know, using it as Breast Cancer Awareness Month, but now also using it as dementia-friendly?
I don't, Breast Cancer Awareness is nationwide. This is just Oregon, and we're not looking to raise money or do anything. It's just a matter of saying, hey, if you have new employees who'd like to be, you'd like them to be trained, now is our chance to come in and do that. It's really not about, you know, just bringing attention, but we're not looking to have fundraisers or raising money for anything. So I think it's, I hope that there isn't any kind of conflict.
Other questions? So on behalf of the board, we'd like to thank you for what you're doing. It's a great service, and I knew you were working with kids. You always had a big heart, and you still do. We appreciate that very much. So, thanks, Ann.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, Steve, I actually put possible board, oh, sorry. Sorry about that.
So we need a motion to designate October as dementia-friendly month?
I'd make that motion.
Thank you.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thanks, Ann.
Item six, approval of minutes are numbered for us tonight. Item seven, approval of vouchers. We have vouchers tonight, the amount of $874,175.86 for approval.
I'll move approval.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Questions?
I do have some. I imagine these are for Lisa. Boardman clerk for Cable TV Professional Services, $3,870.
TDS, Jerry.
Huh?
That was TDS. On behalf of, on the TDS work.
Okay.
That was, that was the Anita, the attorney?
No, I remember now. Yep. It just, it just says cable, it just says professional services.
We charge it to cable TV.
Okay.
Yeah.
Just as we discussed, really.
Yep.
Okay. Carter and Grunewald, did we get a new Bobcat? Or just, or is there a major repair?
That was the, no, that was the Toolcat trade-in that we did. We did the trade-in where we traded the skid loader, and we were able to upgrade to a new Toolcat for $7,800, I think it was. $7,500.
Okay. Thank you. And then, I think Lisa will probably have to help me with this one. It's donor company, and it's sewer ACT E L T A U M O D U K T I N G S E.
What? Yeah, what page are you on?
I'm on page, where are the pages? Page nine. It's $13,500.
Oh, Jeff will know that.
I want to see if Lisa answers it first.
It's in the middle of the page. I'm not sure. Jeff, you know what it is?
Yeah. Sewer account. It's a modulating kit, is what it says here, but...
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
So that...
This was for the, I believe these were the actuators for the valves, and this was previously approved by the board.
I didn't have a clue based on that.
Yep. It comes out of, it comes out of actually our sewer replacement fund.
Very good.
Anyone else? Okay, seeing none, we have motion second to approve vouchers, the amount of $874,175.86. Roll call, please.
Staten.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Carpenter.
Yes.
Ballig.
Yes.
Jacobson.
Yes.
Boudreaux.
Yes.
Thank you. That motion carries. We'll go to item eight, which is community input. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to address the board at this time? Seeing none, we'll go to item nine, proclamations and announcements. Item A, board comments, anyone? Item B, staff comments. Mike, looks like the first couple are yours.
Yeah, I'm gonna just, I'm gonna leave these dates on the agenda for the, for the budget meetings, and then, there's also, it's in the memo that we're gonna talk about later, later in the meeting. We're having the committee meeting, the personnel meeting next Monday, and then the next board meeting is the 23rd, and then I'll let Lisa do number three. Which actually, that just changed today, right?
Well, yeah. Actually, the start date for Steve is gonna change to July 30th. He's gonna be taking over as our municipal accountant slash special projects person, and he's got a good resume. I think it'll be really helpful to have some more help upstairs again, be full-staffed. So, it'll be good.
So you'll have every position in place?
We will.
It's a long time.
Yeah.
How long has this been vacant?
Well, the deputy clerk position's been vacant for a year. So then, with the shifting of staff, we've had a vacancy for a year, so now we'll be full-staffed again.
Thank you.
Steve, I wanna, it's not on the calendar right now, but I would want to try to hold a public works committee meeting on the 30th, if the, if the people are available on that night. That's Monday, the 30th. I believe that's...
Do you want to know who's on the committee?
Amanda and, is it Jerry?
It's Jeff, you chair it, and then it's Jerry.
Well, it'll be a fun meeting.
Oh, yeah. So will that, will that work out okay?
And then Jerry and Amanda.
Yeah, we don't have a board meeting that night?
No, that's, that's a...
Yeah, I'm good.
Yeah, that's fine.
What exciting things would be on the agenda.
We're gonna talk about some signage out at RCI. We have a...
For, for traffic.
For traffic. We have some stuff with drainage, we have some stuff with the bike path. We might talk about some options, gonna be looking at that. We have a request for a tree to be removed on a public right-of-way. Just riveting stuff. I mean...
Sadly, I'll probably be there, because I find it interesting.
Well, on 5 o'clock, right?
Yeah.
And here?
Yes. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything else from staff? So we'll go to item 10, communication and miscellaneous business. Item A, there's an update, dismissal of all claims on Patrick Mockavec and Monumental Enterprises Incorporated matter. Attorney Ted Wuskowski handled that, did a very fine job, and that landed where we all thought it would.
And still, I want to think the chief, he worked, he put a lot of time into that as well, got deposed, and so, thank you, Brian.
Okay.
So, when you say the dismissal, was that the judge's decision as opposed to the party's claim, firing outside?
If you look at the next page of the packet, there actually is the order from the judge.
Okay, item 10B, review of 2019 budget schedule and process, and the new budget process for library budget review.
So this is always an exciting time, right, Jerry?
It is. I'm glad you recognize that.
So we're starting off with the board looking at the schedule tonight, and then Lisa's already, ready to hand out the budgets. She has it in front of her for '19. And the only thing that's maybe a little different this year is I'm proposing that we have at the end of August, giving Jennifer a little bit of time to work on the budget and to have some discussions with the library board, a joint meeting to, with the library board, and then about their budget, and then we can decide if we want to have initial, additional meetings and so forth, and hopefully we have maybe a little smoother process than we've had the last couple of years. And then, we have, the one thing I do want to draw to your attention, and this is on the agenda as well, is that we are having a budget meeting on a Wednesday, and I know board members don't like getting off of Monday, but we're trying to have the hearing, the budget hearing, the week before Thanksgiving, because we ran into some issues the last couple of years about possibly having a quarrel. So just, kind of, just keep in mind, it's the first, you're basically here almost every Monday in October, but also that one Wednesday.
We've done that in the past, haven't we?
We have.
Yeah.
Yeah. But I just wanted to bring it to your attention. So...
Any questions? Anyone?
And those are usually about three hours, right? Just to, the budget meetings?
Yeah, and we serve dinner.
Oh, that's right. Food.
Yeah, at 5:00, we have another meeting at 5:30.
Yeah, so you're right. It's usually about three hours, 5:30, 8:30. Yep.
You're not used to working around food, right?
No. Get to sit down and eat it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Any other questions? Okay, item C, discussion possible. Ask regarding Rooker Milky's task order. Now, there's TDS permitting support. I recommend a motion to approve task order number 2018 day 03 from Rooker Milky for not to exceed time and materials contract amount of $51,050. Funding is from existing fund balance and cable TV franchise fees. So move.
Second.
Thank you.
Steve, could I just mention one thing that I probably should have noted this on the agenda, that, I think the board knows that at the end of, the end of '17, there was about $150,000 in fund balance in the cable TV franchise account, and per TDS, we anticipate generating $30,000 to $35,000 of additional fees from TDS, so we'll just, we'll be able to pay the fund back basically in a year and a half, so there's any concern about draining it, so...
Has the cable board been made aware of this?
I, Paul called me. I didn't get a chance to talk to him today.
Okay.
We had a meeting, and I was able to update the board.
Oh, that's right, Jeff. Yeah. Okay, thank you.
So you mentioned this today.
Well, I didn't know what the exact dollar amount was going to be from Rooker Milky. I didn't know what fund Mike was gonna take the money from, but...
Right.
I did talk to him about TDS and, you know, how that was gonna increase our franchise fees as a village, and actually, Mike and myself and Tom Kirchdorfer...
As I say, we can talk about it then, too.
Yeah. We're planning on meeting.
Okay.
So, they're in the loop. They're in the loop.
Yeah. Thanks, Jeff.
I would just give an update that there, I live just about a block up from the park where the main, what's it called, thing that they're putting in?
Like the junction box?
Yes, that's it. And anyway, they're, they're working today. So, things are moving. So that's kind of exciting.
Good.
Yeah, we met, we had a meeting this morning, or this afternoon, with all the contractors and TDS and everything, and it was...
Yeah, they're already swarming, swarming my neighborhood.
Mm-hmm.
Literally.
Yes, yes, come on in. Huh? Yeah, absolutely. Come on in.
Yeah, there's, there's trucks out there, lots of guys working. It was very exciting.
Yeah.
I've heard lots of people comment, this is a real plus for the village, so having TDS coming on, so hopefully it works out that way. Anything else? Anyone? Okay, so we have motion second to approve task order number 2018, 2018 day 03 from Rooker Milky for not to exceed time and materials contract amount of $51,050. Funding will be from existing fund balance and cable TV franchise fees. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Thanks, Jenny. Item D, discussion possible. Ask regarding appointing Sue Poole to utility, utility billing clerk two. Recommended motion is to do that at the hourly rate of $21.17.
So move.
Thank you.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Sometimes that goes so fast that there, or note minutes person doesn't see, so I pointed at you to indicate that you seconded it and not me. That's what that was about.
It's exciting that Joy's here tonight. Why are we honored with her presence?
Peggy's, Peggy's off.
Oh, okay.
And Joy is our new deputy clerk, so...
Oh.
And Candy has tomorrow night's...
Congratulations.
Yeah, so basically, what the board just did was they appointed Sue into Joy's position, former position.
Got it.
Right. Get that correct, yeah.
Okay. Excellent.
And we get, Candy's gonna do tomorrow night.
Okay.
Takes us to item E, discussion possible, possible ask regarding the old cold storage shed declared surplus. Recommended motion is to do that. Need a motion, please?
So move.
Second.
Thank you.
Please vote for this.
So Jeff, if we defeat this motion, what do you do?
You have to put it back.
Besides peel the egg off your face.
What do I do? I probably start looking for a new job somewhere. This is, we're cleaning up some things here. But, can I focus, can we focus on the positive? Let's not, no, but, I mean, it truly, honestly, in a positive note, the fact that for a while, the contractor was actually looking at having to pay, the youth center contractors having to pay to take it down, demolish it, and remove it, and we decided to try the surplus route, and, and it's a $4,600 gain for us, and just goes back into the fund that'll help fund the new building and everything, so...
Good.
But we have to declare this surplus.
You're forgiven, since you got the money for it.
Thank you. That's what I thought. Ends justify the means, right?
Yeah. Anybody else need to give Jeff a bad time? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I'll sleep better, don't I?
Bike trail information. Item F, information kiosk and bike fix-it station, Keller Alpine Park, and the rotary trail closure. So Jeff, comments here, please?
Oh, comments, I think we're in comments back. Yeah, this is just, we have this completed. I think it's a really nice addition. We've kind of been wanting an information station out there at the rotary, or at the Keller Alpine Park area there, and if you, I have seen people using the fix-it stations.
Absolutely.
What we've purchased is very heavy-duty, and we'll keep an eye on it for, for maintenance over time and everything like that, but I think it's a nice, really nice addition. It's been fun to see people using it and everything.
It has the ability, like, if you have something to run with your bike, you can actually put it up on a stand to work on it. That's a nice addition to that, yeah.
There's a pump.
There's a heavy-duty blender, and, yep.
Yeah, it's a very good idea, Jeff. I also noticed there's a concrete pad for, what's that?
It was your idea.
I don't think so.
Do we have to go back to that part on aging and Alzheimer's?
Can we bring that motion back?
No. No, but, no, I think it's good.
Yeah, the concrete pad for the recycling bin, the garbage bin, that's all nicely done, too. So all that's the, the overall look of that.
That was all done internally, and our guys do a really nice job with that. Nick does a fantastic job of the concrete.
Okay. Any comments on the rotary trail closure?
We were out there again today, because we've been trying to monitor if it's going down, and it's not. I mean, it's...
The one, the one small one went down, but...
It's probably gone down maybe a half inch to an inch in the last couple of weeks. And we're talking, it's, I'd say 15 to 18 inches deep at its deepest point. And with the additional rain that we received, actually, I think since, since April, let's see, May, June, and July, or sorry, April, May, and June, we had over 17, almost 18 inches of rain, which happens in this area, and I think part of it is we've just seen, we've seen a bunch of wet years in a row, both snow and rain, and it's catching up. The groundwater table's catching up, and we're seeing much higher elevations out there than even, even the farmer that's farmed out there said he's never seen the lake that high before. So, we're gonna keep looking at it, and we're looking at options we're gonna discuss at the public works meeting, and, you know, any options we look at won't be cheap, but we'll have to look at, it'd be nice to be able to keep that open year-round all the time, obviously, so... We did close the path, I think is what this is, yeah. We closed it just because people were starting to go around it, and we didn't want to get into a trespassing situation outside of the easement. And quite honestly, from a safety standpoint, it gets slick on the path, and, and it's, you know, it's, when it gets up to the knee, that's when it gets a little questionable, and you can't ride through that.
Thanks, Jeff, for keeping track of that and keeping the public posted. Okay, so item G, discussion possible. Ask regarding Kevin Stokstad, water and sewer maintenance worker position hire. Recommended motion is approve Kevin Stokstad for hire for the water sewer maintenance worker position at Public Works at an initial rate of $21 an hour of full benefits for the employee handbook. Further approve Kevin for a salary increase to $21.50 per hour after six months, and increase to $22 an hour after 12 months employment, pending positive recommendation from the Director of Public Works and Assistant Director of Public Works. We need a motion, please?
So move.
Second.
Thank you.
I assume this is budgeted?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, we're excited about this position. Great candidate, fantastic experience. He's, he's local. He's actually been working for quite a few years for McCann's, so he's been working on the exact same machine that we have. And we're gonna put him to work right away, starting tomorrow morning, assuming this is approved tonight, and, yeah, he'll hit the ground running. But a great candidate, we're real excited to have him on board.
Good.
Well, so he hasn't already been working for a month?
No. We'd have to declare him a surplus, though. No.
Good job, Jeff.
No, I thought of starting him today, and I thought, no. No. It's not gonna go real well.
No, I'm gonna get enough of a bad time.
Yes, exactly.
Anything else on this item? Okay, so we have the motion to approve Kevin Stokstad for water sewer maintenance worker position at Public Works. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Next, Jeff. Item H, Dane County's referendum on dark store loopholes and possible ask regarding League of Wisconsin municipalities' dark stores effort. The possible motion is to approve $2,100, $1,200 from the contingency fund for dark stores fund for dark stores efforts by the League of Wisconsin municipalities. So move.
Second.
Thank you. Mike, you wanna make some comments on this?
Um, as the letter explains, uh, there, there is a dark store legislative committee, and, um, I'm, I'm not sure it's gonna, I'm not sure what's gonna come from that, but the league really, really wants to push on this next session, and they, they wanna do some, some lobbying, and they're asking for financial assistance to do that. And I think it's, it's worthy, uh, a number of board members have been around for a while, we've gone through this with Walgreens at least twice.
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, so I think the league is trying to, um, I, I, I think they thought they were making progress with some Republican legislators last time, and it just, it didn't happen, so they're gonna try to push it again. So I think we should support it, in my opinion.
Yeah.
Do you wanna give a little history behind, of what the, the dark stores-
It's, it's the whole, it's the whole, uh, way, um, a store like Walgreens, or in other communities like Target, the big, big box stores are assessed, and, and there's a debate on, on how that assessment happens with, you know, revenue, and, and, and unfortunately for us, um, our assessment on Walgreens has come down quite a bit, and it, then, and the league's position on this, the people that don't, that are supporting this, is that, then that tax, it has to be made up by everybody else.
Right.
And it's, and the concern over the years is that more and more, uh, of the tax impact is hitting residential properties.
Mm-hmm.
So, again, I think this is really a worthy thing to do.
Oh, yeah, yeah, so basically, um, the dark store is an empty building-
Yeah.
-that you use, that the, that the assessor would use for comparable.
Right, yeah, it-
And, uh, the, the big box companies are using it to get their, um, tax liability reduced, their property tax-
Right.
-reduced, so.
Yeah. And again, then, and then, you know, everybody else has to pick up that-
Yes.
-that burden, right?
And that's happened, what, twice or three times now?
Here, at least twice, if, maybe, or maybe three times is possible.
I think three.
Maybe three times, yeah. Yeah, well, I mean, we have one store, I mean, I can imagine communities that have a Walmart and a Target, and, you know, they're, they're, it's a big, it's a big issue. And it started in Madison, at least around here, I believe.
And the letter from the League of, you know, Wisconsin municipalities that are estimating that that's an average impact, uh, to homeowners of an eight percent-
Mm-hmm.
-increase in the property taxes-
Yeah.
-which is crazy. I, I think this is worth spending twenty-five or fifty cents per taxpayer-
To, to do it.
-of the village money to support this.
Yeah, and then the county, Jerry, the county is gonna do, have a referendum, right?
Yes.
Yeah, that got approved, and, I, I think, I think what Scott was saying, the clerk was saying, the county's gonna do it, don't everybody do the same re- referendum, right?
I forgot to mention that, but you're absolutely right.
Yeah. So I think they're gonna, they're gonna take another run at it and see what happens next session, I believe.
I know, what's gonna happen if you don't try?
Exactly.
You know, so, yeah.
And every time this comes up for the board, we have legal fees we have to deal with, so. Nice to hear that, too.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Any other questions, comments? Okay, so we have motion of second to authorize twelve hundred dollars from the contingency, contingency fund for dark stores efforts by the League of Wisconsin municipalities. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Item I, Director of Public Works, letter to property owners on the South Main Street Utility Upgrade Project Update. Jeff?
Yeah, this just, I wanted to inform them, uh, keep them informed of, of what's going on with the, the, kind of the two failed bidding processes that we went through, and then, um, what we'll have to do going forward. We will have to probably shut the parking lot down for a few days, so we can go in, restripe, patch some areas. We do have, um, uh, people are moved in, I think they have twenty-four or thirty-five, something like that, people moved in over there, and they're starting to use the parking lot and their, their portion over there, and, so I think it's going well, but, um, we're gonna have to do some things to get to an interim basis, and we just want to keep them informed.
So will you be working with the tenants and the businesses to, to update everybody on, on when these things are gonna be closed?
We will, we will. Once, once we get closer, this was more or less just knowing that they were gonna start moving in, we wanted to get this in their hands and let them know, kind of what, what was going on.
Good. Thanks, Jeff. Any other questions? Okay, item J, join the community rest restorative court peacemaker training, uh, slid there from Ron Johnson, uh, chief's involved in this. Comments, Brian?
Yeah, that's just, uh, to get public, uh, make them aware of what is happening. In order for the CRC to work, you need to have peacemakers in the community. Um, it lists the dates that there's gonna be peacemaker training, I believe it was in McFarland on the seventeenth, nineteenth, twenty-fourth, and twenty-sixth of July, from five to nine at the McFarland Lutheran Church. So if you're interested, please contact Ron Johnson.
Can I ask a couple of questions about that? 'Cause I, I know some people who might be interested, but, uh, did, is that, um, you have to go to all four dates?
No, just-
Or just pick one of those dates to go?
Just pick one.
Okay. And do they have to be from Oregon, or can they be from Madison or something, if they're willing to travel to those communities?
Um, that's a question for Ron Johnson, I don't know that one. I would assume you'd have to be from the community, but I don't know that for a fact.
Okay. All right. Thanks.
Any other questions? Okay, so we'll go to item K, discussion possible action regarding change of agent at Quick Trip number seven thirty-one. Recommended motion, approve change of agent to Kelly S. Westbury at Quick Trip seven thirty-one, and Chief Yule has approved that as a, her as a satisfactory agent. Need a motion, please? So move.
Second.
Thank you. Any questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thank you.